You good? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I have a couple other questions. Okay, so overall parking spaces being created was 700, there's just too much information here. Was...
749.
749?
Mm-hmm.
Is that right? So can you tell me how many of those parking spaces are dedicated to the apartments and condominiums?
The condominiums will get two per space, two per unit, so you have 43 condominiums times two, so you have 86.
Eighty-eight?
Eighty-six.
Oh, 43, that's right, I keep saying 44, okay. As for condos, and how about the apartments?
And then the balance are going to be shared spaces, so you'll end up with one parking space per unit, so you have a total of, you have done the math there for your balance of apartment units, there'll be one space per unit that is reserved, and the balance of the space is in the garage, so however many hundreds of spaces that is, are going to be open and available to office users, retail users, restaurant users, et cetera. We've done both the ULI Shared Parking Study, we've compared it to the city of Dublin, and we're confident that we've got the right number of spaces, not too many, not too few. We're in a transitional period right now, obviously, where we're, you know, think we're relying less and less on the car, probably not more and more, but the reality that we live in right now is that condominiums especially require reserved parking spaces that they have control over, apartments really are the same way.
So for the apartments here will be treated differently than they are the others? You won't have dedicated speed ramps up to it?
It'll be the same, we will not have a dedicated speed ramp in this case to get up to the upper levels, we've got the advantage of grade that we're working with, also the garage isn't quite as high as the other garages, it's one level shorter than...
So a portion of the garage will be gated, and you'll have to have a key card or whatever for the apartments to...
Only for the condominium area, in order to meet that market demand, we'd have an area of the garage where condominium users would be able to go and park in an open parking garage, rather than having to try to create individual enclosed garages within the space, it'll just be a section of the garage that will be set aside for them to park, and their reserved spaces will just all be over there, and that's just to meet...
And then the apartments and the office users will...
They'll all be together, and you'll have some spaces...
Which is different than your other facilities?
No, not at all, so the other facilities, we do have reserved spaces, if you go over there on every level of the garage, they're concentrated on the upper floors, near the bridges, and we would do the same thing here, where there'll be predominantly those few, those reserved spaces for the apartments are going to be on upper floors, unless you have units that are on the lower floors of the garage, so we have a liner on it, so floors two and three, and we'll have residential units that are on floors two and three of the garage, we'll have spaces reserved right outside their door, but primarily those apartment spaces are going to be up on the fourth and fifth level of the garage. And then, you know, how it's been working so far, it's been working great, if you've been over to the parking garages, there are some spaces that are sprinkled through there that are reserved, others aren't, and everyone's respecting it, doing a good job.
Okay, so they're reserved in the sense there's paint on the...
There's a sign at the head of the space that says "Reserved," with the number on it.
Reserved for Unit 12 or whatever it is.
Oh, it's just "Reserved," with the number, and then that's part of the management process, is assigning that space number 25 to whatever unit is closest to.
So how many of these parking spaces are assigned to something 24 hours a day?
Just one space per unit for the residential is assigned 24 hours per day.
For apartments and two spaces for the condos?
Correct.
Okay, let me do the math on that real quick, you know offhand about...
I think we have about 130 apartment units, give or take, and 43 condominiums.
So about 346 of the parking spaces are dedicated?
No, it'd be 130 plus 86, so just over 200 of the 700-plus spaces.
Okay, so 216 of the 749, is that right?
That does not include on-street parking spaces, I believe.
So you have 533 spots available in the parking garage for your office users and balance of...
In the parking garage, and then there's obviously on-street that augment those total counts.
Okay.
Which are predominantly used by retail and office users, not long-term tenants, and we specifically tell our tenants that we want them to use their spaces and park in the upper levels, and it becomes an enforcement issue.
Oh, I would think that the residential people would park in the unit that was assigned to them, I'm not questioning that at all, I'm just trying to, as you know, we have had a lot of pressure about traffic in the area, and pressure on the roundabout, that we're trying to solve some of those problems with signage and mark, changing the markings and things like that. With development that requires this level of parking, I think poses a little bit of a problem, because our traffic study, it assumed a 40% capture rate, and when we don't have the 40% capture rate, that's when the traffic study begins to break down, and so when you see this level of parking demand come in, it's a little bit concerning that there's more people traveling by automobile than our traffic study initially contemplated. And, you know, as I see what's going on with the roundabout and some of those, you know, I'm wondering if it's the canary in the coal mine that's telling us that the traffic study and the densities that we're looking for aren't supported by the roadway network, and I fully realize that isn't your responsibility, but it is our responsibility to make sure that we are developing in a way that is sustainable from a traffic impact standpoint.
September 18th, we do start construction on the Bridge Park Avenue extension to Sawmill Road, and that should be open by the end of the year, so that'll be the vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian connectivity between Sawmill and Bridge Park Avenue and Riverside Drive. That's going to be a completely new quarter, running parallel to 161, should take load off of the roundabout, and this is a way that I think council and us as the VILB are being able to work together to get out ahead of any potential traffic issue.
I think it's also, you know, if in fact it's the canary in the coal mine, we've always said we wanted density in this, I mean, I think this just suggests that it's up to the city to complete the traffic network in partnership with our developers, so that the network comes true, and all the benefits that we've discussed about a network also are able to be realized.
Yeah, I just, you know, reading through the planning and zoning minutes, you know, with the use of this swimming pool, it talks about with it being on the fifth floor, for someone that lives elsewhere in the community, they are able to drive up to the fifth level, the parking garage, park and walk directly through a gate into the pool area, and that's kind of the antithesis of what we're trying to develop here, is a really urban walkable district, if you live in Bridge Park and you are going to go to the pool that is designed to service all of Bridge Park, and you're going to drive up a ramp to the fifth floor, to the swimming pool, you know, there's no way that our traffic study would have contemplated those kinds of uses, so I have some concerns about, are we meeting the capture rate? Is the kind of development we're doing meeting the capture rate that the park, that the traffic study contemplated? So...
I can't tell you, somebody that's lived there now for the last six months between, during business hours, three out of five days of the week, I'm getting lunch at Cap City or Ram, and right downstairs, I'm already hardly leaving Bridge Park during the day, and our, some of my coworkers work out at Mesh, we also have a little fitness room within our office that I'm able to use, but I parked my car once, I never leave on most days, unless I'm going to a meeting somewhere, whether it, you know, be in Dublin or anywhere else, that's a driving distance, I think that's just going to continue to build on itself, it's working, I think the formula's working.
I hope you're right, it's going to have to, or we've already taken some heat on social media, and that's certainly going to pick up. My last issue really is with the lot coverage and the allowable 80%, bumping up to 88 and One of the things, I went to and had dinner at Ram the other night, and one of the, I parked on Riverside Drive, I parallel parked, I was very brave, I parallel parked on Riverside Drive, and one of the things that made the experience, enhanced the experience the most, was the space like Cap City Diner, and what, you know, the building is, doesn't have a lot of relief to it, it's a massive kind of straight-up structure in that section of the building, what provides it some relief, and what makes it more of a pedestrian welcoming area, is the spaces like what Cap City has done on the exterior of the building. My concern with our lot coverage is going to 88 and 90%, is that we're losing the ability to have those kinds of spaces by not, by having the building occupy all of the buildable area, we don't have those spaces for relief along the streetscape, and beauty is certainly in the eye of the beholder, but I, the feel of the buildings from the street level is very massive, and the best way to break those up is for those kinds of uses on its exterior. So I don't know, Claudia, if you can speak to what are going to be the options, if I looked at these drawings, there's very little space on the perimeter of these buildings for any, what I would call, relief at ground level, what are their options?
Well, again, you can crunch numbers any which way, we have requirements for the building being close to the street, having front property line coverage and so forth, so if you maximize those areas, then the lot coverage subsequently increases.
I think the thinking was, is that you, they would be more cafeteria items rather than ordering a meal, you might, you know, occupy this portion of the block, or you might be this far away from, and I feel like the answer to this question was yes, we'd like all of them.
Can you jump to the open space diagram?
Sure.
I think that'll help answer our question. I'm starting to be really glad I had that coffee at 8:30 tonight. So the open space that you see right there in the middle is a good example, that's not really showing it very well, I guess...
I might have actually a better one, just a second.
Because we have contemplated creating that space, those types of spaces within the plan, and you can't see it in that drawing that you just saw, so, you know, what you like about Cap City, where dining comes out on the side and it's a covered balcony, there's places designed for both tenants on each side of that open space, whether they're included in the impervious area or not, I honestly, I don't know, but I don't think it really matters to what you're talking about, which is, we thought about, you can see there, there's the area that Cap City has created, that's what you're seeing there on each side of that open space, the space that you have between the right-of-way and the building over to the left would allow that to also wrap around the front, kind of like what Cap City does, as you're seeing there, not so much over in building D1, but over in building D2, that'd be the case. And, you know, you can also create indoor/outdoor space in other unique ways, too, so PENS Mechanical, which is going to open in October, took the storefront area that they have on that corner, so imagine the corner there in building D1, and they're putting garage doors in, and they're creating a second storefront inside their space, so you still have the urban feel out on the street, which is the buildings close to the outside, they're adding interest to the outside and within their storefront system, but then they're also creating a giant indoor/outdoor space that is open to the air and a secondary weatherproof barrier behind that, so it's a design issue that the tenants saw for us.
Unfortunately, that's not going to help for, you know, but the night, you know, majority time of the year, those probably aren't going to be open, and you're going to lose that feel, on the days that they're open, you'll certainly get it, and on the many days that they're closed, you're not going to, and so the 40% lot coverage, or I'm sorry, 90% lot, on the 80% lot coverage, we had some of those spaces carved out, and the 90%, we lose a significant amount.
And are we talking impervious area, or are we talking building? Is this hardscape, or is it...
It's impervious.
Impervious, so, I mean, in theory, we could just plant grass in that entire open space, and we would probably gain percentage points?
Well, this is your park, correct? This is towards their parkland calculations.
It's not, this particular one is not for D4, D5, which is the one that has the waiver requested, so that, this is within the block that has D1 and D2 within it.
And the general strategy with planning, I think it makes sense, is to try to have as much hardscape as possible, because it's an urban environment, and rely on the park for soft scape, John Shields Parkway is right there as well, so, and we can always just plant grass everywhere, but it doesn't really solve the urban feeling, doesn't create an urban feeling.
Okay, so on this drawing, they have the pink hash marks that are for their park space, and I believe it's all of that except for the two slivers on either side. So that is, that is not part of the 10% that is not lot coverage, correct? That is part of their open space requirements.
Well, it doubled, the one that you're worried about, that the waiver is requested, has nothing to do with this open space, because this open space is in a different block.
All right.
The, to answer your question, though, whatever is open, however that is used, it can be used as an open space, it can be used to fulfill open space parkland dedication requirements, so it doesn't say, if you have 75% lot coverage, you can't use the 25% as your park and open space, but again, the one that is at 90% does not have a green space associated with it that would be dedicated at all.
And I noticed that some of the dedications are across Riverside Drive on city-owned land, so would, they would, that would be fee and lieu, and that would be the portion that would, their fee would be attributed to?
It's almost both, where if you have open space existing within a certain distance of your development, you may be able to use said open space to fulfill your requirement if approved by the required reviewing body, but then you still have to do a fee and lieu payment for whatever you're not providing, that was different for B and C block, because that was addressed in the development agreement, but here, the applicant is aware that there is a fee and lieu payment required for what's missing.
Okay, so back to the building where the waiver is requested for the, can you outline that for me?
So this is the building with its footprint that has a waiver request for 90% lot coverage.
So within that lot coverage calculation, you're essentially going from property line to property line, and not able to take into account its proximity to anything like, say, the John Shields Greenway?
Correct, it is whatever lot you have allocated on which you put that building.
And so if the calculation was expanded to include what that block would really function like, which is John Shields Greenway on the left and the building on the right, there's probably a 25 to 30% impervious area, that's how the public will perceive it.
John Shields Parkway is over on the other side of the adjacent building, we're talking about building D4, D5, correct?
Okay, I thought we were talking about building D3, so we're talking about D4, D5, up to the right, okay, so that, never mind.
What would their options be for anything on the exterior on the ground floor of that building?
Something that we've already talked the Planning and Zoning Commission about, we brought it up with them, and we're in the processes of planning this right now, there's a .3 acre space that is directly above the top of this page, that we're, we would like to make a dog park on, that would be, it's all green space. And if you can go back to the overall plan that shows, I think it's the second or third slide that shows H Block, it's in that plan? Okay, so if you look up, do you have a laser pointer I could borrow?
Yes.
I've gotten away without needing one all night until right now, so this is the block that's in question, Chris, right here, so right up here, there's, I believe that's about a .3 acre space that we are purchasing as part of the trade for Bridge Park Avenue Extension, that is all turf, all green space, we're working with MKSK to create a landscape plan to improve that, because right now it just has a transformer sitting there and looks horrible, to also include an area for off-leash dog, is an off-leash dog park area, that would coincide with the construction of this, so, and that is also within close proximity of the building, because there is an exit to the building down here at this end, we haven't done the math to see if that meets exactly the letter of the code, but it wasn't being used by members of that building as a backyard, so...
Okay, but what I'm referring to is relief from the building facade, so these are very massive, you know, this particular building, from what I can tell from the drawings that we have before us now, doesn't have much articulation to it, it's a parking garage, and what I am saying is that in some of the other blocks, you have space for outdoor uses, which soften or make interest to these massive buildings, and when we go to 90% lot coverage on this parking garage site, I'm asking Claudia, what are our options for to create that same sort of relief at the ground floor, to break up, if the building itself isn't going to be broken up en masse much, what can we do on the ground floor to break up those massings if we have a 90% lot coverage?
So I'll tack onto that just a little bit, because when you look at these, and you look at C4, 5, and D4 and 5, it's the two, those two garages that are big buildings, and there's just no green space in there, like, at all, you know, you get green space all the way along John Shields, but then not again until you're over in between C4 and 5 and C3, right, so I think that's part of what is concerning, is just visually, there's two big, really big massive buildings, and not a lot of green in between the two of them, not a lot of ways to break it up visually.
Or I don't, I'm not sure there's a way to break it up on the ground floor with anything else, if we do a 90% lot coverage, we're going to be into our public right-of-way and our sidewalks and things, which would choke down our sidewalks.
Yeah.
So, you know, unfortunately, we don't have the luxury of addressing Block C, but if we go, if building D4, D5 goes the same way as C4, C5, you're going to have two blocks of just essentially massive parking garages wrapped in a, with some apartments, and perhaps a bit of retail, with no outdoor space that would be available to them, because we did 90% lot coverage with the building. Is that correct?
Certainly it is correct, in terms of what 10% lot coverage would gather us as an open space, I don't think that would be impactful as you potentially envision it, the applicant has certainly provided meaningful open space exterior accessible to the public, as well as interior to the building for the residents.
What I'm getting at is the pedestrian experience of, you know, what would, what is going to provide any relief, what's going to provide any interest, what's going to provide a walkable district feel on these two blocks?
One thing that we're sucked into, too, is just looking at specific blocks, right, so when you look at this area that you're concerned about in context, this is a gorgeous open space that runs between these two with a publicly accessible walkway, as was required, between these two, and then this will end up being another park, so as you're walking down Mooney Street, this is, not only is the landscaping along here gorgeous, you also have this great park that runs all the way back through there, that I think we're just not paying attention to at this point.
No.
It may not have the, it along here, but it is directly across the street.
If we were looking at this site completely independent of anything else, I would agree, the 90% is objectionable, but when you look at it in context of everything else from Bridge Street all the way down, it makes sense, I mean, it's a parking garage, and, you know, we're going to have lot coverage here where we don't have along John Shields Parkway, we've got that greenway, we've got the park in Block H, we've got the dog park, we've got the, we've got Riverside Park, we've got the park, you know, in the other blocks, we've got those, I don't know, what do you call them, the little areas with the green, I'm sorry?
Pocket parks.
Pocket parks, thank you, yeah, I mean, it's, you know, when you walk in a city, you don't get, you get this mix, and I think we're going to have way more interesting spaces, green spaces, street spaces, and for me, just looking at the whole area, and having paid attention to the whole area, I mean, I just, I don't have an issue with this at all, as I said, independent of it, of course, we would never allow a 90% block, but I'm just...
I'd much prefer a parking garage wrapped in apartments or condominiums, and, you know, we saw a good example of this in Greenville, South Carolina, which, you know, in my recollection, was surrounded by a lot of concrete, you know, you need to have a parking garage, we need to park people, so, yeah, I agree with Amy's assessment.
I think on the extra green space, I think you're right, Claudia, I don't think it'd be that impactful, that it's going to really make that much of a difference, it's going to end up being a strip, very small and insignificant possibly with a line of trees down it, but what I am interested in, on the inside of any of these buildings, is there space for bicycle parking, or how are you going to handle that?
Yeah, we have space for bicycle parking within the garages, and you can see that within B and C Garage, too, so there's secured bicycle parking for people who live there that want to park their bike, have key card in, secure area, and then there's tons of bicycle parking for the public, too, it's really important for the amount of people that are biking down.
And that is worked into the interior spaces of those four buildings?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Do you anticipate, Nelson, maybe you can't share this, but Chris's point about Cap City, the outdoor area in Ram, when they pull those windows up and that nice outdoor, are there going to be more establishments like that?
Yeah, we're actively encouraging all of our tenants to do exactly that, because it adds so much to the street, and also just to the experience of people who are in the restaurants, to have indoor/outdoor space, that whether it be a retractable area and animal, we just talked about that at a leasing meeting today, how important that is, and...
And there are basically those two restaurants, and I know there's a couple more you've announced, how many restaurants do you guys anticipate in this whole thing, when you're done with these blocks, how many restaurants?
We'd always anticipate it in somewhere between 12 and 15, and, you know, I think where we're at right now, we're definitely tracking that way, we may end up with a couple more when you throw in, the more casual, inexpensive, quick pickup type places, but yeah, we're trying to hit all the segments.
And you get, I think Chris's point about the Cap City, that space thing, that outdoor thing that attracts you in, you guys get that, right?
Oh, yeah, we get it.
You understand, that's what we're looking for?
Yeah.
And this one block being 90% doesn't necessarily prevent that in this block area, I guess?
No, it doesn't, and more density actually just adds to that feeling of being in an active spot, when you start at one end and you go, and down here, you've got this beautiful open space at the exchange that just opened, and there'll be another open space right here, you've got the passage open space, I forget even what the heck that one's called, that's the muse, that's the pavilion, this is going to have some outdoor programmed space, we have bocce shown in there now, to try and have these different experiences and all these things, I think Amy's right, when you think about when you go down any other street in any other city, you don't have eight different choices of different open spaces that are all extremely high quality, I think we had $1.2 million of hardscape in one open space alone, that, and that's not even the pavilion, that was muse, this one right in here, so I mean, these are, these are things that just don't exist in any other city that I've seen, just repetition of high-quality, well-executed open spaces within a very small footprint.
Claudia, can you put up BSP8?
Take me a minute.
I don't know that I'm articulating what I'm trying to articulate, so maybe this Okay, so this, the Ram Outdoor Dining is in this portion of the buildable area that wasn't built on, and the Cap City Dining, I believe, it's, I don't know if it's that space right there, or that space right there, but it is on the space that is in the buildable area that...
It's not, it's the one that is white.
Right there.
Okay, so it's that one?
Uh-huh, exactly.
And then Fidow is going over here, and that's the white that you see right there.
Okay.
What is going there?
Fidow, the Irish pub.
So the only thing that I was trying to articulate was that we don't have those little areas on this because of the 90% occupation of the space, so...
It's more about the use of the building than the lot coverage.
Well, they can't, you can't project outside of... Well, they can't, you can't project outside of...
Well, the way the tenant spaces are set up, they're not set up, really, for kitchens and restaurants.
So, they're not, that's not going to be in part of these?
These spaces up here are all residence, they're apartments for rent or potentially condos. So, the only retail spaces that you have are down along this side, and they are not set up for kitchens. Those are set up to be art gallery spaces, small retailers, low rent.
So, you likely won't have anything on the exterior of the building?
Through here, you'll have storefronts instead of looking at a parked car. We thought that was better than having been looking at a car and trying to screen it in some other way. So, then...
But nothing breaking up the building massing?
Well, beyond storefronts? You ever have storefronts with awnings and canopy and other things like that? No, we're not going to be carving out into the parking garage for, to be able to accommodate that. And one thing missing from this plan, too, is because it excluded H Block, is, you know, as you look at the rhythm of open spaces that are falling through here, is that there's a big open space that fits right up in here. There's also open spaces that are going to come along with Block G, too. So, it's, we're trying to keep the, even, more of them evenly spaced with the master plan view versus a tunnel vision. I understand what you're saying about Block D-4, D-5, but I think we got it covered. I think it'll be fantastic when it's done.
Yeah.
I believe that wholeheartedly.
Thank you, Nelson. Thank you, Claudia. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the basic plan review with the nine waivers. I guess we have to approve the nine waivers.
I'll second it.
I'm sorry, say one more.
There's a motion.
I don't know that we can do that. We talked, can we separate the waivers from the building?
So, it is three votes. One is for the waivers, which has to come first.
Waivers, that's what she made. Then the basic plan, and then you designate the review body.
But we cannot vote on the building without the waivers, I don't think.
You can separate out the waivers if you want to vote on them separately, but, right, it's the same...
We vote on the waivers.
That was not my motion.
Vote on the...
Yeah, you got a motion.
Her motion was for all nine waivers.
Okay.
And please call them.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Luckleyter?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Sam Rosgrooms?
No.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
And then I guess I'll make a motion to approve the basic plan with the four conditions that are listed.
Second.
And?
Mr. Luckleyter?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Sam Rosgrooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
And Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Then I make a motion that we require the reviewing body to determine future development plans be the Plan and Zoning Commission.
Second.
And?
Mr. Luckleyter?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Sam Rosgrooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Okay, so, that's it for that, right?
That's it.
Then we have aging in place strategic plan.
[coughs]
And, you're welcome. Thank you for, as you have been aging in place with us.
[laughing] We promise there are no waivers or conditions.
Did these guys just age in place?
I think...
They just aged in place.
They did. Tremendous grace. Michelle?
We'll never get back.
Good evening, members of council. Before you this evening, for your consideration, is the city's Aging in Place Strategic Plan. Council had the opportunity to preview this plan last year during a council workshop, and at that time referred the plan to the Community Services Advisory Commission for further review. Over the course of several months, the commission heard from a variety of guest speakers with expertise related to this topic of aging in place. Presenters included representatives of Ohio University's College of Health Science and Professions, Centaro, and the Central Ohio Agency on Aging. In your packet is the redline version of the plan that shows the changes being recommended by the commission. Commission is asking council for acceptance of this plan this evening. With that brief overview, I'd like to introduce Mindy Carr, Chair of the Commission, and also here tonight is Ann Bowman, also a member and former Chair of the Commission. And Mindy's going to highlight the areas the commission believes to be of high priority in addressing current and future service gaps related to aging in place.
Thank you.
So, first, on behalf of the commission, I would like to thank you for inviting us to review this plan. These are the types of projects that we really enjoy looking over and discussing, and we found that this draft was very well thought out and very comprehensive, and really enjoyed the discussions that we got to have with all the different speakers that were brought in. Now, the plan, as you have it, reflects some of our conversations with the redlines that were added. There were a few elements that we want to highlight so that you can consider them in addressing future service gaps. Through our discussions, we kept coming back to the conclusion that a one-stop shop is really needed to provide one place that everyone can go to figure out what is available to them. There are so many different agencies, as we found in our discussions, who provide a variety of services that anyone looking at it independently might not know where to go. As a commission, we also found that most all of us have dealt with trying to find services for aging family members, and so this wasn't something unusual to any of us. And if we had known about all the different services available and known where to go, things would have been easier. Several of the agencies provide services to caregivers directly. So, even if your family member doesn't live in this area, they can still provide you with direction, which is very helpful. I have family in Cleveland, and had I known about that, I would have called them directly, even though the people I was calling about were not here. So, the one-stop shop is our first recommendation. It could be an online source, but we really feel that having a person to talk to would be most beneficial, because people don't all have the same needs. You have a situation that arises, and you don't know where to go. And often, when these things happen, you know, not many people are looking ahead, saying, "As I get older, what am I going to do?" Something happens, and then you have an emotional reaction, immediate need, and you're concerned, you're confused, you don't know what to look for. If you have someone you can call who can walk you through and say, "Do you have this? Do you have that?", et cetera, they can point you in the right direction. Often, you don't even know what you need. So, along with the one-stop shop, we, our second recommendation is the idea of a co-located service assistant, I guess, for lack of a better word. We don't think that the city staff should necessarily be providing this service, because it's not what the city knows. There are so many agencies, though, that do work with and for the city, that if we could find some way to facilitate their presence along with OU, they're talking about creating a big wellness center, and work those all together so that locally, there's somewhere to go where you can access all of these resources. If the city can be the facilitator in that process, we think that would be very useful. And then have, of course, links on the website to get to these online documentations or to the person you're trying to reach. Our third recommendation involves trying to solve some of the transportation gaps that currently exist, particularly for older adults who are no longer able to drive to access basic needs and social and civic opportunities, because all of those elements are really very important to your ongoing health. And just because you can't drive doesn't mean you don't have those needs anymore. So, some of it may be addressed with the walkable community, you know, if you really can park and stay. But people don't necessarily want to leave where they are. So, if you're living in a subdivision, and the grocery store is two miles away, and your doctor's four miles away, how are you going to get there? You have the issue of just getting around town, which we discussed, but also the issue of getting from your house to, say, a bus stop or something. Sometimes that can even be the limitation if you're unable to walk a long distance to get to a spot. So, there are several different pieces of transportation that probably need to be considered. We understand there's currently a mobility study in progress, and so we look very forward to the results of that, and hopefully getting to review that as well, to see how it fits in and to provide other comments based on some of the discussion that we had in reviewing this plan. Our fourth recommendation is to look into establishing a village-to-village type program where we can connect residents who are in need with residents who are willing to provide services. The city recently implemented, oh, it's called a yard squad, yes. So, something like that, where it was initially, you know, "We can help you clean up your yard in the fall" or, you know, "Mow your yard" or whatever, but taking it further. So, if the villages to, the village-to-village program, you may say, "I'm willing to drive you to a doctor's appointment." And you have someone who says, "I really need a ride to a doctor's appointment," and it helps just to facilitate some of those connections. They exist in communities in the area and across the country, and they seem to be working well. I don't know exactly what's needed for that, but that's something to let someone look into. And our last element, which really ties back to all the rest of them, is how imperative it is to have partnerships and how the city can really provide some facilitation in that, to make sure that all of the different pieces are working together. And while the city shouldn't be the provider necessarily of the transportation or of the, you know, direction on who you need to, who you need to call, they can put the agencies and people together who are doing that so that the residents know which direction to go to. And hopefully, it'll all be much clearer for the rest of us moving forward, because unfortunately, none of us get away from aging. So, and even, I mean, really, this is a great, this is a great plan in my perspective, because even though I don't consider myself an older adult, I will be someday, but I have older adults in my life that I care about, and so it does affect me as a caregiver as much as, you know, an adult myself. So, it really, it plays much more into the population than just that target audience that it would be serving, because it would also be serving the large number of caregivers that are supporting them. So, with that, we recommend that you accept this plan. Like I said, no waivers, no conditions. We just like it the way it is.
Thank you for that. Way more than 90 percent lot coverage, but we're okay with it.
Thank you, Mindy. We have got a really great group of people on that commission right now, and the work that you're doing is greatly appreciated. So, let's say we did adopt this thing, Dana, then what happens with, or Michelle, what do we do to implement after we...
I think some of the next steps are internally, as staff, we need to come up with a work plan and look at these objectives and how we're going to carry them out, timeline, who's responsible. We've already engaged some of the potential partners, but we need to continue to do that. And there may be some areas where we need to do some additional surveying or focus groups with some of our older adults in the community, too, to really understand some of these areas and what the needs are.
I think you're absolutely right. I think that several of us have, you know, older adults as parents. Some of this would have been really useful when my mom had her back surgery. I didn't know where to go. I didn't know who to call to help make sure that she, and she lives by herself. And, of course, then there's always John. You know, we always know he needs assistance as well, so. I was just making sure you're still awake.
Well, that's, I mean, that's a very good point, though. It doesn't need to be someone who is on the verge of being just homebound because of aging conditions. You can have younger, older adults who have medical situations that maybe it's even short-term. But we had talked about that, you know, what about someone who has macular degeneration at 65 and suddenly finds that they can't drive, but otherwise are very vital and, you know, looking to go? And you can also have people who, you know, are nearing 100 and rearing to go, but just unable to drive. And so, there's not a defined line of, you know, what a senior is or what an older adult is. There's a huge range that this would apply.
Absolutely, and not knowing who to call or where to go is really hard for a caregiver. And, you know, I have kids, and, I mean, I am the sandwich generation, right? And I have a full-time job, and I clearly spend way too many hours here. So, but Michelle, I'm really glad to hear that you want to include some of those very folks who have used those services in the past or still need those services in that, because I think that they can give you some really, really critical information about what were their struggles when they were looking for those services.
Mindy, I appreciate your work on this. I wonder, your partner in crime, could we bring her up to the podium as well?
Yeah, Ann actually...
It's nearly 11 o'clock. You deserve to be on camera.
Ann actually shared a lot of the discussions. They happened before I was elected in for this coming term, so.
Come on. Introduce yourself. We all know you. For the public, tell us who you are.
Oh, Ann Bowman.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ann.
Thank you both for your work on this. I would add, I think one of the most significant pieces of this is the transportation piece. I'm thinking about my own father as he grew older and unable to drive, and my mother-in-law and my sister-in-law, neither one of them could drive, and my sister-in-law and my mother-in-law lived in California, Texas, Georgia, Maryland, and Pittsburgh. And their by-far favorite place to live, and this was in the last probably 12 years of my mother-in-law's life, after my father-in-law passed away, she moved in with my sister-in-law. And their favorite place in the whole world is Austin, Texas, because they had this incredible senior transportation program where they could call and pay a really nominal amount, like a few dollars, and somebody would come and get them in a van and take them wherever, literally wherever. It didn't have to be a medical appointment. They could go shopping, they could go to lunch, they could, but it was, it enabled them to get out of the house. And that was the biggest difference in their quality of life. They moved to Atlanta, to a suburb of Atlanta. They had a beautiful home, a beautiful neighborhood, and they had no way to get anywhere. And it was just crushing to them, because they had this great quality of life in Austin, and then, you know, very limited quality of life. And I think about my dad, he was so social, and being homebound was the hardest part. And in Kettering, where he lived, he kind of signed up too late, but there was a group of seniors who, retired folks, who liked to give people rides, and there was this group of people who needed rides, and all he had to do was sign up. And it was sort of a volunteer thing, and I think there might have been a nominal, like he paid $35 for a year, a month, it wasn't a month. But these folks would come and take him out, like if he wanted to meet his friends for lunch or, you know, whatever. It enabled him to be independent. You know, he could get there on his own. He didn't have to call somebody and say, "Can you please help me?" And that was huge. So, I think that transportation piece, especially in a community like ours, which, while, you know, some areas are much more walkable than others, we need to think about getting folks around, you know, by car.
Okay. Well, I make a motion that we approve or adopt the aging in place program as suggested by CSAC.
And I'll second it.
And?
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Luckleyter?
Yes.
Sam Rosgrooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
And I would suggest that next time we have a group like this, we put them at the very front of the agenda.
That's a great idea.
Because this was cruel and unusual punishment, and I apologize.
That's great. I find it very interesting, my developer, you know, background.
Well, thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Adoption of the regular council meeting schedule. Mike?
It's been before you for the last several weeks. I think it's pretty clear what needs to be done here, unless there's any changes to what's been proposed.
Any comments from council?
We probably don't need to hold that national championship spot after the performance on Saturday.
No, you never know what's going to happen.
You never know.
Never know.
There'll be a game anyway. Somebody will want to see it.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, I make a motion that we adopt the schedule as set forth in the...
I'll second it.
Well, are we going to have any discussion about the July?
What do you want to do in July?
The 2nd or the 30th, I think, was the...
Yeah, I'm all for the 2nd, but I think that in January, change the meeting date to the 9th instead of the 8th.
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
Yeah, we do have that as an option, 8th or...
I'm sorry?
We do have that as an option, 8th or 9th, so we need...
Can we make the 9th?
I would recommend that we meet the 9th instead of the 8th.
Yeah, not only for us, but for staff and other people, we might mandate come to our meeting, so. And I think that's fine.
Of July.
Unless anybody else has any issues with July 2nd.
Nope.
Okay.
July 2nd it is.
So with those two changes, I'll move for approval.
Well, I think it's just one change, isn't it?
Well, there's, we needed to decide, we had to clarify July 2nd versus the 30th?
Yes, you are correct.
Okay.
And choose in January.
Second, if there was one needed.
Ms. Salee?
Sure, why not?
Oh, sure. Mr. Luckleyter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
I object to Amy's vote, actually.
Ms. Sam Rose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Staff comments. Dana?
Yeah, just one item I left at your seat tonight, and that's a memo initiated by Donna Goss, Doug McCullough, about the workshop next Monday night. What we want to do is do a little bit of forward-leaning and updating on smart city initiatives